First quarter of business. The posted agenda, we have a couple changes. The Michael West type extension, we signed those papers, so he's all set to go. He won't be needing to do that. The Rockledge will be continued to December 2nd at 6:55. And we may have a couple of changes depending who shows up tonight. Did you have a chance to review the minutes of September 16th, 2019?
Yes.
Does anyone, could I have a motion to approve?
Some would.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Could I have a motion to approve the meeting notes that Jim prepared for us?
Some would.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. I don't have any, or I do have some announcements. As you know, Thursday, 1:30 to 3:30 is our training session with Charles Brinfield, Cultural Historic Landscapes. There will be a workshop working with him in the morning for any planning board members who would like to come, from 9:30 to whenever, to lunchtime, to go over a number of the issues that we're working with, the projects, KPH2 and company, we have time Grassmere and Rockledge, just trying to sort of go over some of the technical ways you look at things and try to adapt, but try to interpret what you're looking at. Our male development of a property while still trying to protect and preserve the historic significance and aesthetic character of some of these landscapes that we are working with now, that we're working with these large estates. So you're all certainly all welcome to attend that as well.
She'll be up here.
She'll be up here in the dressing room. He's going to have a PowerPoint presentation for both sessions. I think that's all I hope. Would everyone go and listen to their talk about toxic chemicals and harassment and all that good stuff?
Yeah.
You're all certified?
No.
Oh.
But I spoke to Joan, because it was supposed to be this week too, the last one.
Oh.
But Joan gave me information about how it can be done.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
Good.
Second?
I appreciate it.
Do you have a statement to make?
Yes. We did discuss, thank you so much, about setting a special meeting where we hope to be able to really do a lot of the work with Rockledge, KPH2, Brindle something, and Key House, and Grassmere. And that would be December 2nd, that would be 6:30, those are the three items that we'll have on the agenda for that night. Could I have a motion to establish that meeting date?
Special meeting?
Special meeting. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Very good.
Will we get an email notification of that? Or is it real?
Yes.
Very good.
See, we have a couple more minutes left. You all got a copy or shoot up of a referral for a wooey's sign change. They bought the J&amp;J Automotive there across from Tops and Karma. And we have the CEO has, you didn't see it?
Yeah.
I think, I bet we, I think we have it on screen. Please stand by. There you go.
Less intrusive than J&amp;J's.
Yeah, that's the sign that they want to put on the building. And as per custom, the CEO sends it to us to look, make sure we feel it meets the design standards, it fits in and whatnot, if you have any objections. I think it looks okay.
Are we voting now on this?
I think we should.
I vote aye.
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 I think we can tell Rochelle, so we can give her a permit.
She is.
Yeah, that's it.
Official.
Okay. Since I really don't think anyone else is going to show up tonight.
We'll have to settle for Mark.
I wasn't going to put it that way, but.
For December 2nd?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Rockledge?
Yeah.
December 2nd.
Thank you.
Ooh, I've been reminded, we have the other thing from the town board on historic structures law that they sent to us. They want a recommendation from us, what we feel they should do with it. I hope you all had a chance to read it, go over it. We have 90 seconds to discuss.
All right.
Or we can put it off until after we deal with Mark.
We can start.
Yeah. So we'll start now with Mark. Mark?
We can start with that, which I'm trying to do a full page. I have paper copies if anyone wants them. I've worked on it. Yeah, that's fine. So JD Bond and Lee is, and Sons are proposing to do a two lot minor subdivision. A portion of property owned by JD Bond and Sons. Jim, can you just slide over on the location map a little bit? Bond also owns this piece here, which was, was actually an application, a previous application to planning board. And then also this piece here to hand this piece, so that Bond owns, they own all of that property. And this is its own separate parcel, so it was being proposed as a two lot minor subdivision. For Rich, which is proposing to build this house here, this son Matthew lives right here. As I said, two lots being created for the parcel sizes, I can't quite read that. I know that's 14 and change, and I think this is somewhere around 11. It's 14.36, and then this piece here is 11.456. Access is going to be via a common entrance, so there'll be, there's a common entrance here. It's already the existing access point on White School House Road. This has been approved by the Town Highway Superintendent. So access to this property, legal access to this property is going to be through this existing roadway that goes here and actually provides, you know, separate access to this, but you can see that they just, since they own this piece right now, Matthew goes this way to get into this house, but we're doing this so that it has a legal separate access through here. So now, access will continue along this and into the area where Rich wants to put a house in the garage. On this side right here, Jim, as I've shown, I've prepared a, like a common drive, an individual drive easement plan, and so it includes this parcel, or this area through here. And that, I've been in touch with the attorney for the project, Kevin Wade. And so he's drafting an easement and maintenance agreement for these various sections. It's a little tricky because, so this section is common to both, like this area right here. And then, so there'll be an easement agreement for that, and this is actually a parcel of 1B is going to be access over parcel 1A for, for this section through here. So the, that easement and maintenance agreement will be drafted according with the path. Jim, if we could, yeah, if you could look back from here. So on the property, it's also just state wetland, listed on the western portion of the property. They've been previously delineated and verified by D E C. All construction will be away from, or any improvements, I should say, and construction will be outside of that wetland adjacent area. And application has been made to Dutchess County Department of Health for approval of a water supply. There's an existing well here, and proposed sewage disposal system going here for, for these, you know, the new residents in the garage. It's just a garage, there will be no dwelling units or bathrooms within the garage, it's only within the residence itself. It's a simple three bedroom residence. This existing residence here where Matthew lives did obtain, previously obtained Health Department approval for a water supply and sewage disposal. Jim, if we could go to the next sheet, there's a copy of. Yeah, so similar plan, right? Only this is, this is the front sheet for the application to the Dutchess County Department of Health. Septic system, absorption field, as I had mentioned, outside the wetland adjacent area. There's an existing well on site that's going to be utilized for water supply, and I noted here where the well and this septic system is located for parcel number 1A. And if you could just slide down to the next sheet, Jim. And this is just a detailed plan for the water supply and sewage disposal for parcel number 1B. I spoke with the Health Department today. The view of the plan is going to take place tomorrow, so we should have, and they've already inspected the site, and don't anticipate any problems with obtaining approval from the Health Department. So I already have approval from the Highway Department for access and anticipating Health Department approval probably by next week.
So Mark, the driveway, one part is sharing with the other part for the first part of the driveway, and the other part is sharing with the second part for the next part of the driveway. That's all going to be written up in a legal document and run with the land?
Yeah.
And so anything down the road, that'll be continued?
Absolutely. Okay. And as you, as both Eric and I were out at the site, I mean, Rich is going to, because they own the ground, you know, they own this parcel, just going to probably use this driveway to get back from there. But once again, we're just providing this information, so it provides a legal access for both of the properties in the event that everything's over.
Any questions for Mark?
So that's, when is that driveway going to be put in? Or is that in already? Or, because we didn't come in on it.
No, this portion.
We didn't get a side of it.
Yeah, this, this driveway exists.
Right.
Right there. You know, it's just like a farm road. So once again, we'll prepare the documents for, I hope they have the ability to install that driveway, but.
But they, they won't do it by right away?
They're just going to utilize this, you know, access through the, through the adjacent parcel.
What we're accessing is the main driveway, but sign is located, is that right?
Yes.
And the existing well, how long has that been in place?
It was done by Smith, well, I think it was two or three years ago.
Was there any anticipation of this new dwelling?
Uh, no.
Or how many spans did they have of well?
Before this, I don't know if you saw, there was, there was some fencing down along the pond.
From what?
Fencing.
Okay.
Along the pond. And so Rich had that for irrigation for, he was going to have water supply for the animals.
Okay. There was previously noted about farm land use on the property, you said you were going to, I think it was on the ag data statement maybe, on the site, is that you're going to take that off just for the purpose of the files, because it's not actively used now? Is that right?
Yeah, not this, so this section won't be, but, you know, the, I think I kept it on there because the adjoining lands.
Oh, it is done.
Yeah, because that, that piece that I showed, that, that goes down to Slick Corner Road, that's, he moved an old house there.
Okay. Okay, then that one's, it was right, it was right.
Is that their barn with the hay out on Slick Corner?
Yeah, when you, yeah, it's a multi, you know, it's a two-tone metal barn.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's their barn.
And they have a old Dutch fire next to it.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then that, there used to be a residence there that burned down, and then Rich bought, bought that, bought that property.
Mark, if emergency vehicles needed to get to the new house, what route would they take?
They could just come right in through here like this.
And that's going to be clearly Mark, right?
Yes, yes.
That's how the equipment gets into the mine, too, so it's a pretty substantial work.
How far is the other triangle in the north end? The existing one where the easement's going to be, how far, does that burn all the way in already? Is it just the part of the easement?
Yeah, this through here. Yeah, and then there's a hall where that goes, you know, up the wall to here, but that's, this existing driveway goes right through.
Any other questions?
Do you want to report on the safety?
I wouldn't do.
All right. Anyone here?
I'll talk about it first, then you can talk about it.
Okay.
My comment is, I don't think there are any issues whatsoever.
My comment is what she said.
Oh, yeah. Are you here for Rockledge?
Here.
Okay, they have been continued to December 2nd.
Sorry about that.
Yeah. Okay.
There's still work, doing some work to try and get some of the data together that we're waiting for. There's no new information available at the moment, so we're still waiting for the final report on water, hydrology and whatnot.
Okay, so December 2nd?
December 2nd.
No sooner.
No sooner, promise.
But it's a lovely night to come out, so.
It is!
Forgot.
I believe we got a, some sort of email about, from CAD about this, because at the end they had no, actually it did.
Ryan was there.
Ryan, okay.
Yeah, Ryan was there.
Okay, so he said they have no issues, so.
No, I didn't see, you know, I'm worrying on that. So I emailed, I'm confident, and.
Ah.
So we're going to have to let Ryan speak for himself, I guess.
I didn't see, I didn't see anything.
I did see, no issues. That's serious. She did say so.
Yeah, but he, well, I'm content to.
Yeah, I am too.
Trust the visitors.
I'd hate to see it held up. Brian voiced no, I could say he voiced no objections to it while I was in his presence.
Let's take that out of the resolution.
Therefore, yes. Therefore, could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Some would.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I have a resolution. Up, that looks like it. Okay. The Town of Riddick Planning Board hereby access follows on the application by J.D. Bond and Lee and Sons gang for review under Town Coach Chapter 101 at 368 White School House Road for minor subdivision within the RC5 zoning district. One difference, the classification is type 2 under secret for which coordinated environmental quality review is precluded. Based upon review submitted information, including reports from the planning board members, and on their site, this is the project property, finds the proposed work is consistent with the objective stated in Chapter 101, Subdivision of Land. With respect to the minor subdivision law line alteration, finds the proposed action is consistent with Town Coach Chapter 101, Subdivision of Land, Section 101 dash 4.1. Approves the application inclusive of minor subdivision plan sheet, prepared by Mark Dominsky, P.E., and L.S. dated June 29th, 2019.
September 1st.
Authorized the planning board chair to stamp and sign the above cited site plan upon the after the satisfaction below conditions and a requirement of the 180 calendar days of the adoption of this resolution. Stamping the subdivision flat is non-jurisdictional subdivision or for filing purposes only by the Dutchess County Health Department. Submission of above cited survey map and the form and numbers specified within Town Coach Chapter 101, Section 101 dash 4.4D4, except as been modified to lesser extent by the chair. Submission of the deed or deeds to be filed with the Dutchess County Clerk's Office and payment of any outstanding fees and a reversible notice to the Town of Riddick related to the review of processing of the application subject to this resolution. This after the news advised to be required within 60 calendar days of stamping by the chair, the approved final plan must be filed with the Dutchess County Clerk's Office. Could I have a motion to approve?
Some would.
Second? I will call the board. Woody?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Melody? And I go down.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, Cheryl Mariece? Not here. And we'll continue. Okay, I think our next item then is new business.
No, thank you.
Take care.
Reschedule for Reese's?
Uh.
Two, let me just.
Why don't we wait, we'll do Judith Delberg, and then we'll see if Reese shows up?
She said she's.
Oh, she's not showing up. Oh, in that case. Could I have a motion to reschedule the Cheryl Mariece public hearing to December 2nd at 6:00?
Isn't that one getting to be a really clogged up meeting? Is this the third meeting that Ms. Mariece has not come?
They have a violation, and she goes away and did not have the person coming to repair it. So we're hoping by the next meeting, we'll have that done. So that's why we pushed it out.
What's the nature of the violation?
For October.
What's the nature of the violation?
It's not code. It's maybe for a code.
These four chairs.
How tight are we on the December 2nd meeting?
We only have the Rockledge, KPH2 present, so I figure we throw her on first.
Okay.
Hopefully they're running the wings.
It should be quick. Okay, could I have a motion to continue with the?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're continuing, December 2nd, 6:35. Okay, Judith Delberg, 15 Hagerty Hill Road, site plan and special use room, complete garage to accessory.
Hi. Hi.
Please use your microphone.
Does it wait for short people? I think we're good. Now it's made for short.
If I could interrupt you for just a moment. Are you here for Rockledge?
Yes.
They will be here on December 2nd.
Oh, this is canceled?
They can continue, yeah, they're still waiting some data that they don't have yet.
Oh.
And so they will be here on December 2nd.
All right, I was wondering, I thought it was, no one was here. All right, December 2nd, what?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'm Judy Delberg, I'm here, currently purchased 15 Hagerty Hill Road with a friend. We have an accessory apartment that I live in and the main structure, it's all in one building. Unfortunately for me, my sister was diagnosed with stage 4 lung cancer, and it's going to be very hard, but I think I'm going to have to move her in with me, and to live in that dwelling with my friend and her young child is going to be tough, I think, more so for her child. I'm actually happy there, it's a big space for me, but we have a five car garage that we don't need a five car garage, and what we'd like to do is make three of the garages into a one bedroom apartment for myself and my sister when that time comes. Unfortunately, it looks like it's coming sooner than we thought. So she was doing well for a while, and then we got the news that on a PET scan, it had spread to her lungs, and so now we're trying to undo experimental treatment, but I'm a nurse, and I know what that looks like going forward, so I'd just like to have something in place that if she needs to move here, she currently lives in Brooklyn, in the same building as my mom, who's 87, so she can't take care of it. So I'd like to have something in place for when that happens, and in the meanwhile, live there myself. So what we'd like to do is move the accessory apartment from the structure where it is to a pre-existing structure, which is the three, of the five car garage. We're not planning on changing anything on the outside of the house or the garage, just to put the structure in the garage. And that's where we're at. This is Naveen, she's been helping me enormously with this, and if you have any questions, by all means.
Okay. Questions?
Two people will live in the accessory building?
Yes.
So there will be two bedrooms there?
No, it'll be, we grew up in apartments in Brooklyn, my sister lives in a studio now, and I live in a small space now, and we shared a bedroom all the way growing up, so we'll just share the space. I mean, if it comes to that point, I'll need to be right near her anyway. I took care of my father, so I kind of know what this is, and I'm really, I'm okay with that.
I'm not seeing any elevations of the.
Yes, it's very thick. Thank you.
Well, that's, but the photograph shows, does it show what's existing, or?
Yes, what's existing, or the exterior has not been changed.
So the garage door, the large garage door will remain?
No, it will be removed.
Okay.
And it will be filled with a wall and a door and a window.
So that's the elevation where the garage door is?
Correct. Garage door will span, I don't know how to use the clickers, from here to here, so that it'll be wind and a white light, and a door will be empty.
Very clear.
What's the door next to the door?
I'm sorry?
Well, Eric is, is looking for something, may I ask a question?
Absolutely.
How many bedrooms are in the main house?
Right now, there's one bedroom upstairs, and there's the accessory apartment downstairs.
So two bedrooms, or what?
Two bedrooms. So that would become a playroom also for her daughter, and they'd still be upstairs. It's a pretty big bedroom upstairs, so they use that together. She's a single mom, so they've been sharing the room, just, there's been some reason she likes to stay with her mom, so it's fine.
Do you know, in the application meeting, talk about the fact that there is no bathroom in that downstairs bedroom?
No, there's nothing in the, we're in your main house.
There's a bathroom.
In the downstairs?
Yeah.
And the septic system, is that been shown to be adequate for additional bedrooms?
We're not doing additional bedrooms because we're removing them from the main structure and putting one in the garage.
Okay.
Well.
That's not true.
There will remain two bedrooms in the house, plus at least one bedroom in the accessory structure.
Well, the accessory structure will be removed from the house, so that had the bathroom. So that will be removed and go to the garage. So technically, there is one bedroom in the main house and the bathrooms, and the garage would be one bedroom, and there is a bathroom right now, we're just expanding it to have a shower and a water.
So the, the garage already has a bathroom?
Yes.
Okay, so.
We go back.
It's really not changing.
How did we go back? I have a plan of the existing, and it shows a bathroom.
Right on there.
Oh.
This is the existing, and there is a bathroom.
There is a toilet.
Ah, I can do it.
Now you can have a cat, and you can play games with the cat that does bring light in.
Definitely consider that. So that's what's there now, so the garage door is here, and it will be removed, and a door added and a window, and the rest in filled in the same flavor of the existing structure.
Michael?
Yes.
One of the bedrooms in the house will no longer be used as a bedroom.
Correct.
It will remain a bedroom. I mean, if this property gets sold, there are two bedrooms in the house.
In which case, if it was sold, then at that point, they would have to either upgrade the septic system, or the.
Or show that it does need upgrading.
Yeah, but they would, yes, they would have to address that as in to show that.
I have submitted all the paperwork to David Pearson, and awaiting his response.
Yeah.
Explaining to him what we're doing and how we're doing it, and I'm just waiting for an answer.
And that response basically will, you know, be what we're looking for in terms of, of the septic system.
Yeah, it should be okay, there is a thousand gallon tank, which is enough for three bedrooms every day, and we're hoping for a favorable.
I'll be speaking with them tomorrow about another issue, so I'll just, I'll ask them how far it is with this.
That would be very crucial.
I can do that. Other questions? Okay, well, I have a resolution.
Michael, if you'd like to handle this.
The Town of Riddick Planning Board hereby access follows on the application by Judith Delberg for site plan approval and special permit use in the Town Coach Chapter 125, respective conversion of a portion of existing garage to accessory residential structure 15 Hagerty Hill Road in the RC5 zoning district. One, accepts the application and supporting documents as adequate for initiating review under the planning board's advisory of the public. Classifieds of proposed actions, type 2 under secret for which coordinated environmental quality review is precluded. Schedule a public hearing on the application for?
You have it on your sheet, I think it's November 18th at 6:35.
Oh, yes it is. Oh, good, thank you. November 18th at 6:35. And delegates, planning board members. I'll go, who wants to go with me?
I'll go with you.
Melody? Do the site visit. In accordance with Town Coach Chapter 9, Conservation Advisory Board refers the application with the Conservation Advisory Board for review and written comment concerning environmental factors. In accordance with Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, 239, Planning Planning and Zoning Referral refers the application with the Dutch's County Department of Planning and Development for review. Authorizes without prejudice to any information or comments that may be presented to the public hearing or may arise based on both the above cited field visit and referral. Preparation with working draft of improving reservation for the planning board's consideration on November 18th, 2019, or as may be later timing. Could I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, we'll see you on November 18th and we will get to talk to you about the site visit.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Might have a record on our hands.
No, we haven't, we haven't done a referral yet.
No.
On the start, on the historic structures. This will give you a little precis of it, this has been in the works for a number of years. Basically what it intended to do is set up an advisory group for the planning board similar to the C A, what the CAC was, the Conservatory Advisory Council, to advise the planning board, the town board, the ZBA on environmental issues. This would advise those same boards on issues of historic properties, archaeology, things of that sort. They would have an advisory role only. The membership would be specific to people with certain skills that would be in a position to really give us, you know, good, good information, good advice. It's not a board like the CAB, so it's, as I say, a strictly advisory structure. I don't have else to say.
Let's see, what's the acronym of the group? We have a CAB.
You're right.
What are these people?
We have a cab, we have a pub, we have a tub. Good question.
All right, I'm not approving anything, I hear it's got a proper acronym.
We'll, we'll come up with something. But that's what it is, I guess my recommendation would be to suggest to the town board that they can go ahead and approve this and then we'll see how it works. It's a council, not a board, so.
So when you say how it works, is there, is it gonna go through a trial period and then we?
I think there's always a trial period, you get members on something and see if they stick, if nothing else, and see how it works.
So you see if we can get people that actually stay with this.
Who'll do it and if it really does help, it really is working to help us. It's, as I say, does not commit us to anything, the planning board, all the decisions are still ours. It's just another source of information that is hoped to improve helpful to us.
So we've never been signed by anything in this regard before?
I don't think we have, I think that there have been times when there's probably more than we would like to have known and like if someone else, you know, be able to do the work for us to find it. And they were often doing, you know, education for the, for the community on the boards of our historic structures, things of that sort and our archaeology.
I think they could, I think the part of the law that goes beyond just sort of oversight is the education piece. That, you know, they could continue to add recommend, well, man, you all got the same notice that I did that the village is looking to expand their historic district, did you get that? So, I mean, the saying, this type of a board or committee here could do the same thing. It could look at the town as a whole, make recommendations to the town board about certain areas or certain districts. If houses have, if they're now of a certain age, that they could be added to districts or something like that, they would be looking at it. They could be available, they are available in other communities to go out and meet with property owners who have questions about what they could or should be doing. So they become a resource, not just for the planning board, but for the community as a whole. And in some communities they're very, very active and others they're not. So it has the potential to be a real asset in terms of a resource and a tool, both to the town and to us. It's not regulatory, it's not, if you look at it, binding in terms of color choices and things like that that people find offensive. That's.
That's it.
So may I ask a question?
Yeah.
Most of this seems to deal with what you might call man-made creations.
Yeah.
Historic buildings, contributing buildings, local landmarks, that's a little big, or non-contributing buildings. But then we get down on page 4 to A5 and individual property shall be designated, one possibility is because of its unique location or singular physical characteristic or landscape, topographical features, earthworks, or streetscapes represents an established and familiar visual or aesthetic feature of the neighborhood.
That sounds like possibly a view shed?
Yeah.
Is that what's meant here?
Yeah, in part, yeah, much of what we're gonna try to do with Mr. Bernbaum is to try to explain precisely that sort of thing, how this would integrate into, when we look at a property, when we look at a historic property, how we're supposed to, or the tools that we're gonna need to try and see what is there, not necessarily just the man-made features of it, but the landscape itself, the, let's say, the man-made landscape, how areas have been, landscapers have been basically developed for aesthetic reasons to convey a certain appeal, a certain view shed, a certain, a certain articulation of views at that time, sort of like an Andrew Jackson Downey, something like that.
But I'm talking possibly about a property with no buildings on it, but it's, it's, you know, beautiful and it's been that way for a hundred years.
Well, this would help us when it's almost a subdivision.
Like the. The Burger Hills are protected, but.
Yeah, but as an example.
Or a subdivision, let's say some of the very larger parcels that we have, that we enjoy the open views, things like that. We require conservation subdivision as a right and it's a special permit, it's a conventional subdivision. In trying to locate the features of the subdivision, we create a clustered subdivision, conservation subdivision, hopefully these would give us tools to know, okay, this is, these are the things that are essential to the view, to the view shed, to what makes it aesthetically pleasing, what we like about this. Let's try to put the houses, the structures over here to preserve this. It's that sort of a thing that we oftentimes are not as adept at doing because we're not as familiar with how to do it as we are with structures, with vet lines, with things like that. And so that's the idea, to integrate that into our review process.
Like maybe, maybe, I mean, I'm trying to, it's long, isn't it? When you read it, that's like, yeah, that is a pretty complicated paragraph or sentence there, but maybe the South Fields and Southlands, you know, that's, that to me is a very important gateway experience of coming into, into my deck, that has historic characteristics. Aside from just being open space, there's cultural and historic aspects of it.
I'm talking about, originally, come up with something, maybe it would be what is currently agricultural land.
Mm-hmm.
You know, maybe the property.
The Sholdor, for example.
Sholdor, yeah.
Yeah, going down into Rhine Cliff.
Exactly.
It would certainly apply to something like that.
All right, so then how are they restricted by this?
They aren't necessarily restricted, they're not restricted by anything by this.
They're way in line.
This would just be guidance to us, if they're, let's say they wanted to subdivide and do a housing development on the shore of that property. This would be guidance to us as we're developing the conservation subdivision and force that process to how best to do it, to try to preserve to the extent we can, the aspects of the shore of property that we as a community have found visually valuable, historically significant, something we'd love to see preserved if we can and at the same time integrate into it, the development, the housing development that the developer's proposing to do. The Vogel Farm, yeah, which is, yeah, very definitely the Vogel Farm there on 308.
Vogel Farm, I'd say it is good.
You know, kind of.
What's it called?
The Pascot?
The Pascot Farm, yeah, with the big red buildings and all that and before you get up to the fork in the road.
Is that the Soviet?
I know a gentleman owns it now and he's thinking of doing things with it.
Like they meant to.
Yeah, not necessarily bad things, but.
Good things, farming.
That farming.
Intuition farming.
Yeah.
Very good.
A couple more questions?
Sure.
When you look at what the responsibilities of the committee will be, one of them is to recommend the acquisition of easements or other interests in real property as may be necessary to carry out the purposes of this law. This, it's getting, it seems to have like elements of an open space project. And so I wanna know is that the intention, is this a group that actually is gonna go do something in terms of identifying properties that are important to the town, they're trying to find funding to, you know, be conservation easements or whatever.
That's the hope.
That's the hope.
Because that's not clear at all in the objectives, they're focused on restoring nature of properties and so forth. Only these other little pieces in here.
And I think part of it is just pieces because it's not something most of us are familiar with, having to do, really are.
Well, one thing we, one thing we could do in terms of assuming that the resources are available is that we could, we could ask Mr. Bernbaum.
We had asked him to.
Oh, we'd ask Mr. Bernbaum to take a look at this
Yes.
and tweak language to see if that, I, for example, I'm hoping that as one of the outcomes of this learning process with Mr. Bernbaum, I'd love at the end of it to be able to have a a town map, a map of the town identifying based on criteria that's yet to be identified. Where are these open spaces, where are these cultural landscapes that we should be aware of? I'm not, I'm not suggesting that it be a regulatory map, but much as like a Hudsonia map of wetlands helps us because we go, oh, let's look at the map and you see it's close to this or close to that or it may be reminding us, gee, as you're driving down into Rhine Cliff, the Sholdor Farm and the Ankeny Farms present gorgeous views in two directions. And if it only, like I said, was a resource to us in terms of, oh, yeah, it's close to that or I forgot it's close to this, those are the kinds of things I would hope this kind of group would keep pushing for us to develop. We don't have, for example, at least I'm not aware of any mapping in the town where it talks about predictive archaeology, I think they use the word predictive archaeology and that's where you might, you might anticipate there's a higher probability or possibility of Native American or prehistoric artifacts. That'd be nice to have that kind of a map that just says, you know, all along what was once the Sepasko Trail. Probably there's a greater chance of finding it there than here. You know, that would be just something that this kind of a group could take on as a project. If the, the trick will be in finding people who have the time and the interest and the dedication to get proactive about this. It certainly allows those things to happen, but finding the people who'll say, let's, let's do this or let's find out what other communities are doing. I think we're just looking at it as it's another group of people that could be helping to advise us.
But when you're talking about open space, it seems to mean that the focus here is a little different than, let's say, in Red Hawk, where they have a truly comprehensive open space program that's, that's funded and so forth, where they're looking at saving architectural lands and open space just for the purpose of maintaining wetlands and the rest of it. Whereas this is more, this is a type of cultural resource, it's always been part of Rhine Beck as a view shed, different? Am I correct?
This isn't intended to be an open space plan, it's not.
No. At this point, at one time, the, actually the CAB is tasked, one of their obligations is to create an open space plan based on ecological and environmental issues for the town.
Will we be calling this group in every time we go to a site visit, just like we do with the CAB? Or are we doing it just on ones that we deem to be?
No, we should not.
If we deem it to be necessary.
Too many people involved in that.
I agree, that's why I asked, you know, but we're, we're now making, you know, making sure that we don't have a site visit without a CAB member.
No, well, that's required because they are a board.
Because they're a board, this is not a board.
This is clearly not intended to be a board that has any of that.
So we involve them at our?
At our discretion.
At our discretion and they may involve themselves in their own discretion?
I don't get that out of this at all. If a property is designated as historic, as ours will be, because it's next to Rockledge and it's got a contributing, we're going to learn on it, then it, even if we seek a building permit, not a supply permit, the building inspector needs to refer this to this committee only.
That sounds a little rough.
And that is actually a challenge because it's supposed, since it's not a board, we did not want to create a board.
Every action which does not require permitting and/or other approval from the planning board does require issuance of building permit by the town's building inspector. The building inspector shall refer that application to the planning board for its determination as to whether or not that project has the potential for adversely impacting historic buildings, historic district, or landmark district, or archaeological resources. If it is determined by the board that there is such potential for adverse impact, the application shall be referred to the committee for its review.
So that triggers a site visit.
I, I wanna build something on my property. All it takes is a building permit, the building inspector needs to refer it to the planning board, which will take at least one more month or two.
And we require a site visit on that board?
And I think we need to redline that so that the town board is aware that we think that may be a problem.
I'm not sure, I, I wanna reread it again, but we already, because of section 125, have that right, didn't we?
We have the right, yes.
But now it's a requirement?
We are not obligated.
What do you mean, have the right?
Well, we can refer to anyone we want to refer, anything we wish to refer to them. If we have to, if we have to review it and give some approval, we have the authority.
No, I'm just taking the example of just a building permit, which typically you would not see.
No, typically you wouldn't, typically you would not see that.
My only thought is, it's more added time and it kinda depends on how many of these properties there are and where they are and who owns them.
Are these discreet properties or, I mean, who's gonna make these designations of?
Designations already exist.
They're made.
Okay, so it's not, I mean, because the land is historic.
Yeah.
And it's been around a long time.
There are existing, there are.
There are existing, but that's.
And what this, what this committee could do, or this council could do, they could recommend to the town board other properties they thought should be designated, but that's the town board's decision, not theirs.
Just remember, you've got a whole lot of boundaries now. You've got the Hudson River piece that runs from the river to Route 9. So you can eliminate all that stuff as far as where the supplies go because it's already got guidelines relative to those properties.
Well, for those properties, what we've done, it's under our zoning law, we're required to do a site time review of the store property or adjacent store property. So the planning board has to do that anyway. And it's up to us if we feel we would like help from this council to give advice.
I personally do not see any great advantage to this proposal at all. I think it's another piece of bureaucratic work.
Well, it's not intended to be, it is intended to be a resource.
Intentions, the road to hell is filled with intentions.
No, I, I know, I know, but the idea is that there are times when expertise would be, would be of assistance to us and.
But we, we're still not assured of any kind of expertise, we don't have.
Well, yeah, but you, you have to assume they're gonna appoint people.
Well, we're gonna be, have people that are interested, but that doesn't make them actually.
No, they actually have to have specific skills.
Can you read this? It says what the criteria for the members of.
We don't have any members yet, so.
I know, but there are very stringent criteria, you know, one has to be an architect with knowledge of historic.
I understand, but we haven't had an indication that we're gonna be able to fill this.
Well, if we can't, then we're not gonna refer to them because they won't be there to refer to.
Oh, right, that makes it easy.
You know.
I just simply like to suggest that the planning board have the opportunity to hold this and then talk about it again after this presentation, where we're gonna have a little more insight and information.
That's a good idea.
That's one suggestion, and the other is, I think it's important for the town to think above, it's already damn hard to build in this town.
Yeah.
And, you know, I mean, we haven't found a way yet to carry out the requirements of the comprehensive plan to have more properties close to the village and elsewhere that do not require five acres and 10 acres. We haven't found a way to do that and yet we're finding ways to put more, you know, more time requirements.
It's going more in penance out there.
I don't know, we never saw it and if it hasn't been crafted properly, we should look at that. But we didn't see it as requiring more time than any other referral that.
It'll still be 30 days, that's it.
Well, this, this here, you know, Woodland is a perfect example, I mean, if she had, you know.
You could really, I'd just go to the building inspector, pay my money and get a real permit with my set of plans. But now he's gotta refer it.
We need to go back.
But now, he's got to refer it, because we need to go back and look back and see if that's adding a step that isn't necessary.
Necessary.
It was never the intent to slow down the process.
It was just to try to create another group of, hopefully, expertise who could assist us when we're dealing with certain types of properties. But once again, when we refer things, it's 30 days for the CAB, for the county, for whatever. It'd be the same 30 days for this one, if it was referred to them, the planning board referred to them. So it doesn't add any more timeline to it at all, because we have to wait for 30 days anyway. And if they can't come up with anything in 30 days, well, then the opportunity is lost. But that's what we'll do. We will tell the town board that we would like to hear Mr. Bernbaum, he is going to be reviewing this himself, so hopefully he can, you know, he's an expert in this, this is what he does, and he might be able to give us some good guidance on how to do this. If that's unagreeable, we'll have to talk to him, and then we can beat on this.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay. And one more thing. For KPH 2, they made the change, and one page of the EAF has to be re-noticed. So basically, we just need a motion to approve re-noticing that one page. It's not the whole submission to the involved and interested agencies, it's just that one page of the EAF.
I want to re-notice the whole EAF, but it's just the...
Just that one page.
The part, that part, because it hasn't been due since then.
Right.
But it's not the whole three or mine, it's just the three or four pages.
No.
Because there is the moderate change to one page.
So legally, we need to approve re-noticing that, having the applicant re-notice that. So have I heard a motion to do so?
Sooner.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. That's all I got. Anyone else have anything?
No, shut up. Make a motion to adjourn?
All in favor? Very good.